Okay, all right. So the time is seven o'clock. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the board to select through the order for Tuesday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. If you would please join, rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any public comments this evening? I don't think we have any, anybody from the public joining us online. So we'll move on to correspondence. I'm going to assume.
There's no correspondence, Matt.
All right, thank you. We'll go to number four, first electors report. I don't have a lot to cover tonight. I want to touch very briefly on the mask mandate that I issued last Friday, which became effective yesterday. Basically, this just extends the mask mandate to all individuals, whether they're vaccinated or not vaccinated. We put that policy in place with town hall and public, publicly owned buildings last Wednesday. And I was in a position where I had to make a decision based on input from health authorities and looking at the data and looking at the very rapid spread of the so-called Delta variant. Quite frankly, it's not a decision I wanted to make, nor do I think I should have had to make it. I feel very strongly, as many of my colleagues in Fairfield County do as well, that it's something that should have come from heartburn on a more global basis, because what we were doing is trending toward every town doing its own thing, some towns doing this, some towns doing that. And we learned very early on in this pandemic that that was not an effective way to handle public policy with regard to public health. So if you remember all the way back to February two thousand and twenty, some towns were closing their playgrounds, some towns were locking down their town halls, others were. And I, and I think that we would have been better off with a more consistent policy. So to that end, I teamed up with my colleagues within the Western Connecticut Council of Governments. And we, we tried to approach this on a regional basis. So Mayor Cabo in Danbury, I want to give him credit for that, was the first to announce the policy for Danbury. So at this point, Bethel, Redding, Ridgefield, New Fairfield, then Brookfield have all followed suit. And many of the other Western Connecticut towns are considering doing the same. I think some of the West South County already have. It is my hope that this is a temporary thing, that we will see whatever Delta is going to do then go away relatively quickly. But, you know, with the input from the state and local health authorities, we felt collectively that we're not closing anything, we're not telling people they can't do business. It's not like before when the governor shut down the bars and shut down the restaurants and prohibited indoor dining. We're just saying, when you're in a public space indoors where you cannot distance, then we require that you wear a mask until we get through this thing. So I just wanted to add a few comments to, so that people would know how we arrived at that decision. So any comments from my colleagues, any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd just like to add under probably old business, new business on board, just a discussion between us or the Chair of Revision Commission, okay, the one item, and the other item would be the old police station. What are we going to do?
Oh, okay. You want to add that as?
As the last item, the last two items.
Okay, you make it, did you, okay, so you're making a motion to add?
Nineteen would be the Chair of Revision Commission, and twenty would be the old police station.
Okay. All right, I'll second those. So a motion on the floor to add those two items. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, so we'll, we'll add those two new items. Thank you very much. Moving on to current business, item number five, consideration of approval of the, or acceptance of the regular meeting minutes of August third, two thousand and twenty-one. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make that motion.
Okay, Paul, any, any discussion, any? All right, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Item number six, consideration of police department body cameras. My colleagues will remember that last year, the Police Accountability Bill was passed by the state legislature. And one of the required, one of the many requirements of that bill is that all police departments be equipped with body cameras for each individual officer on patrol, and that must be accomplished with an archive system. Chief or Lieutenant Libertini, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this, we have a little bit less than a year to put that in place. Is that correct?
Yeah, if, the deadline to put in place is July first next year, however, to be eligible for possible grants, we have to do it by the end of this year.
Okay.
So that's why we want to get the ball rolling right away on this. Actually, probably a month or two behind what I originally wanted to do. But we were finalizing a couple of things to make sure we got everything done correctly. Just to back up, just to give you a little bit of history, about six years ago, Lieutenant Libertini and I were tasked with, actually Lieutenant Libertini did most of the legwork on it, but we were tasked to come up with a plan of what we were going to do, if we were going to do body cameras or car cameras back then. The consensus was to just do body cam, I'm sorry, car cameras at the time. However, when we made the decision on what company to go with, we were looking at into the future that we'd probably have to have body cameras, would go to body cameras eventually. So we decided on a company called WatchGuard, and we equipped just about every single patrol car now has car cameras. And we have the infrastructure in place already that we just need to add the body cameras for the most part. We do have to add a couple more car cameras, but it's mostly body cameras, updating our servers to get up to what we need to have. That's why you have two separate quotes. And then I'll leave the rest up to Lieutenant Libertini to explain further, and if you have any questions about it, he's on as well.
Well, first of all, thank you. Can I answer any questions about anything? I understand you guys have the quotes in front of you. Is that correct?
Yeah, we do. Just to make this proper and formal in terms of procedures, I'm going to put a motion on the floor that the Board of Selectmen approve an amount not to exceed one hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars for the purchase of equipment from, hold on a second, from WatchGuard Video, and approve an amount of nine thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars for network synergy for information technology support for a total of one hundred eighty-three thousand, five ninety-six dollars to be forwarded for their approval to the, to the Board of Finance and to be paid from current and prior balance of capital non-recurring funds. There's a second? All right, Richie seconded that. So now we have a motion on the floor, so questions?
Yeah, I know it comes from the capital non-recurring fund, but was there anything put in the police budget itself for this?
No, well, this has been part of the capital plan here, but in the police budget, no.
You also, you have to remember that this, I believe, last year's budget, this Police Accountability Act was put upon us after the budget had already been meted out for the, for the year. And sir, the only thing I would suggest is, in looking through the quote, I have been on vacation for the last week, and I noticed that the quote is missing something. And I've been trying to reach him, and I don't know if he's on vacation, but he hasn't returned my phone calls or my emails. But there is forty-five hundred dollars, four thousand five hundred, missing for a particular device that we need. Because we are switching from local storage, which myself, Captain Pugner, and Chief Finch retired, I'm sorry, Chief Pugner and Chief Finch retired. Thought was best was storing this data local, so we would have control over it. Data storage locally is expensive. You're talking multiple, multiple terabytes of information. And now adding body cameras just expanded that exponentially. So we decided to go to the cloud and use WatchGuard, which is now owned by Motorola's cloud-based evidence storage. So we are going to move all of the, I'd have to look, but I want to say off the top of my head, it is something like fifteen terabytes of video data to the cloud. In addition to, once we have the body cameras, any of that data is going to be stored on the cloud, and that is what is included in this price. And quite frankly, that is why any company, whether it be Taser or Axon now, that is the other competitor for WatchGuard. As far as I'm concerned, it's really, your choice is one or the other. It's Taser, it's Axon, or it's WatchGuard. There really isn't any other companies out there that provide the products and the service that, that we're getting from these two companies. We just felt that WatchGuard was better. What you're paying for in that cost and in that money, and yes, there will be an ongoing cost. This isn't just an initial, you're paying for equipment, but you have to understand that it's monthly licensing per device. So there is a cost going forward in addition to this initial expenditure. But I would own, what I would suggest for your motion, sir, is just to increase it by four thousand five hundred dollars for a total between the network synergy quote and the WatchGuard quote for a total of one thousand, I'm sorry, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, ninety-six dollars. And I am quite confident that I can probably save about seven thousand dollars, because I think we have, I think the quote from NetSynergy is, it's based on a worst-case scenario, and I don't think we're going to encounter that.
Okay, so before I get to any technical questions, this is something that would ordinarily be subject to a competitive bidding process. But it sounds to me like because we are all, we already have a relationship with Network Synergy and WatchGuard. Is that right?
Yes, well, Network Synergy is our IT company, so we've had them for fifteen-plus years. But yes, we do have a relationship with WatchGuard, which was recently bought out by Motorola.
Okay.
Matt, sorry to interrupt, but does anybody want to amend that motion from one eighty-three, one ninety-six to the amount one eighty-eight, ninety-six?
Yeah, that was my motion, so I will, I will amend that. Thank you for that. So the corrected amounts for WatchGuard equipment is one hundred seventy-eight thousand, nine twenty-one, for a total of one hundred eighty-eight thousand, ninety-six dollars.
Correct.
Okay, so if, so is, so is there, is there a reason why, is it, is it cheaper for us, is it less expensive for us to stick with WatchGuard than it is to go out to bid to other companies? Because you said there's only two that.
Well, to be honest, there's a lot of companies out there that offer a body camera. There are not a lot of companies out there that offer a body camera that integrates with your in-car camera. So right now, on the market, the two major competitors, if you wanted to add Panasonic, that would be three. Panasonic on the low end. Axon, which makes what you probably all are aware of is called Taser. They, they used to be the Taser company. They changed their name to Axon. So Axon makes the Taser that we use. They also make an in-car system, and they also make a body camera. I will be upfront with you. I think their body camera is fantastic. I think their in-car system is terrible. And their price for storing stuff and their evident, they have another system called evidence.com. Not a fan of it. Quite frankly, I'm not a fan of it. So the best in-car, because obviously before body cameras became popular, I mean, we've been using in-car cameras since, what, the early nineties on VHS that was stored in the trunk of a police car? They've come a long way. The quality has improved, you know, exponentially. The cost is, has as well because of the technology, but the, the point I'm trying to make is that I felt WatchGuard has always been on the top of the market as far as in-car cameras. They've had one of the highest products. They were one of the most expensive. We've had other in-car products that we've experimented with that were just absolutely terrible. We had nothing but problems. WatchGuard has been good. Their customer service has been good. I've, you know, when parts break, we have a warranty. We tell them, they send it out to us. We send the old one back. It's been, it's, it's run pretty well. Their evidence system where we can log in and view videos and send videos and record stuff and take it off of the server or take it off of the cloud has worked very well. So in order to switch to Axon, which I don't feel is that much more of a superior product, that it would be worth it to have their body camera and then have their car camera, I think WatchGuard's car camera is excellent. I think their body camera is excellent. And I think, you know, the mounting options, when you talk about a police officer and where they're going to put the camera on their body physically on their uniform, I think WatchGuard has a, has a better solution than, than Axon. So, yes, it would be much more expensive to have to get rid of the fourteen car cameras that we have right now and replace them with Axon, and then also integrate their body cameras, which would also have to change our server and how we would, you know, we read some more stuff on the back end of that. Yes, it would be much more expensive. So honestly, I, I think our only choice is to go with WatchGuard. I hate to say, I don't want people to look at it and say we're pigeonholed because we already went to WatchGuard. We specifically went to WatchGuard knowing that in the future, we most likely would have to go to body cameras, and we did that purposely. So I, I think it would behoove us to stay with WatchGuard and continue with their product, because I think it's one of the best.
Yeah, and I, I would just add, if you were looking at anything else, you were looking at, if you were going to go with a different system equivalent, you're talking at least double the price of what we have right now to finish our current system.
You also have to remember, all that equipment has to be removed and replaced, and there's a huge cost with that, just in labor. And, and again, if I thought that Axon was that much better of a product and their company was that much better of service, I'd be sitting here asking you for money to go to them, but I, I don't believe that.
Okay, questions?
Yeah.
Lieutenant?
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions.
Certainly.
Warranty, what's the warranty behind this?
So the warranty, initially, the warranty, I believe, is we, we've paid, so we have the car cameras, correct, and we've had them since, oh, two thousand and six? Chief, two thousand and seven? And yes, there have been problems. We've had a couple of issues here and there, but we have maintained a warranty with them, and it's been fantastic. So the warranty for this system is it's five years. So because we're paying a subscription, so what I mean by that is forty-five body cameras. At forty-nine dollars a month per camera, we get a five-year warranty with those cameras. So if anything goes wrong, if anything breaks within that five years, we, we get a replacement. After the five years, that's when we would need to go into contract with them to continue using their cloud service and also warranties. The problem being is I cannot give you an accurate number as to what, in five years, what the cost of their warranty is going to be and what their cost of their video service, meaning the body cameras per month per device, because there's a licensing fee per device per month. And that information I don't have, but it's going to be obviously significantly less than the initial cost. But there will be a contracted maintenance portion that goes along with this after the five-year mark.
Is there, is there an annual maintenance, like, a license fee?
Yes, that is the, so, so per device, it is forty-nine dollars a month per body camera per month, and there's forty-five body cameras. With the cars, the car videos, it is a hundred and forty-nine dollars a month per device per month.
So you said we're getting forty-five cameras?
We're going to get forty-five. I know we have forty officers, thirty-nine, thirty-nine were sworn, but we also have two specials who will have to wear a camera. And then what, you know, we were thinking is having extra on hand, obviously, if one goes down or, or one breaks, or we have a, an issue with one, it would be nice to have a couple of spares. That number is negotiable. I mean, if you want to knock it down to cameras, I mean, you're only saving, you know, a hundred dollars a month per device. I mean, we're fifty dollars a month per device.
It looks like it's about twenty-six now, licensing fees. Then we'll, next year, we'll have to put in the budget.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, so if you wanted a licensing fee for, for all them, it looks like, where'd it go?
Interrupt Mike just for one second while he's looking. The current car cameras that we already have in place, we're already been paying maintenance on them, and that's in our, already in our current operating budget.
And I believe that's six hundred dollars a year per device.
Yeah, it slowly goes up over time. The older the device gets, the more expensive the maintenance is on it per year. So that is currently in our operating budget for our current car cameras that we have already.
Is the cost of using the cloud on top of everything?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Are you saying that the cost of using the cloud included in what I gave you? Yes, it is. That is the cloud. To be honest with you, if we were to not, if we were to decide, and some departments do this, they don't like the thought of the cloud, they don't like their information being somewhere, they don't trust it. And I, and I understand when it first came about, there was a lot of that, and that was legitimate, but now it's, it's, it's been around so long, and it's, most of these companies have a lot of security that goes into these, these things, and I don't, I don't think it's a problem like it, or a concern like it used to be. Yes, we could store this information locally. However, that would increase the cost quite a bit, believe it or not.
Is that cost for five years, or is the annual cost, or how's that work?
So, so the cost, if we were to store it locally, is that what you're asking?
Oh, for, for the cloud business.
So, so this price is, yes, what I gave you tonight is the price to store all the information from our fourteen car cameras and our forty-five body cameras for the next five years.
Five years, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? You said there's, you were looking for a grant? If you get the grant before the end of the year, we can apply for a grant?
Yes, that is, that is correct, and Chief Pugner could probably elaborate on a little more, but pretty much what it is, and it's, it's, it's normally a grant procedure is, is if you're looking to purchase something, you apply for a grant, you're either awarded the money or you're not, and then you go ahead and you purchase it, correct? With this grant, they want you to purchase it first, and then you apply to them and tell them how much money you spent on the body cameras. And then they will decide whether or not, based on the economic impacts of your community, how much money they're going to give you. So I cannot give you even a remotely accurate figure.
It's going to be zero.
Well, I don't know if it'll be zero, but it, it, I don't know if it'll be zero, but we're going to apply for it.
I know, I'm just kidding, good. All right, well.
You, I mean, I thought the same thing you did. It's going to be zero, but.
Well, let me, let me, Dan, I'm going to modify my motion one more time. It's just, I won't restate the whole thing, but I want to add to the last sentence with the not to exceed number of one eighty-eight, oh nine six, comma, to be offset by any grants that may become available. So we'll just throw that back, back on there. You said, we seconded that again, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and sir, gentlemen, just so you guys know, they did give us payment options. We can obviously pay the total amount due, or we can pay in five installments over, you know, we can pay yearly over the next five years. So, so there's that option as well.
We will forward that information to Board Finance.
Very good.
And they can decide how they want to do that.
Right.
Okay, so any other questions?
No.
All right, so I'll try your mic. It's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. I'm going to make one other motion attached to this. I'm going to make a motion that we waive the bidding process as it is in the public economy, public interest and economy to integrate with the current equipment to achieve cost savings in the purchase and implementation of the program. There a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Rich. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Lieutenant.
You're welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, thanks. Moving on, item number seven, consideration of Oktoberfest. And it had one of those for a couple of years, but Lisa Tsou, the owner of Broken Symmetry Gastro Brewery, is once again applied to the town to host a, an Oktoberfest, which is planned for, let's see, I'm trying to pay here, September nineteenth. Sunday, September nineteenth, from twelve to six P M. This has been reviewed by the Old Train Station Committee, and it will involve only the parking lot of the old train station. And it has been run for a couple of years prior. It's a very successful event, brings a lot of people to our, to experience our downtown. I know it's supported by the Chamber, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve the use of the train station parking lot for Oktoberfest, subject to review by town attorney and submission of all required insurance and liability forms. Okay, floor is open. Does COVID planning any part in this? I know it would be outside and all that, but things could get a lot worse between now and then. We'll have to, I, I think that is the, that's the, the promoter's risk if there's another plant down. Right now, you know, anything outdoors is fine, so it's, it's something that we'll have to watch, and she will have to watch. Just as long as she's aware of it.
Yep.
That's a good point. Is there any other people involved other than Broken Symmetry? No, she has, she has no other sponsors this year. She's doing it all on her own. Any questions, Paul?
No, not at all.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to approve. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item number eight, and we'll get to you soon. We're coming right up. The next two items on the agenda have to do with the the deferral of assessment into the program, of course, that we put in place a couple of years ago to stimulate business growth in the town, business investment. And it was discovered that the ordinance that we use, the enabling ordinance, requires a little bit of language modification because it's not clear in one aspect. And if you remember, what we wanted to do, and that was supported by the Economic Development Commission, was put the incentive, the tax deferral incentive on commercial property, but not residential. And when you have mixed use, where there's property where there's residential and commercial and same footprint, it's unclear as to whether or not that the residential is, is residential portion is eligible for the deferral, which we've never granted before, and which the EDC didn't want to grant. So you'll see on here, Marty, do you want me to read this aloud, the?
Yeah, you can.
Language?
Sure.
All right, so I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we modify, I'll, I'll do this in two motions. I can do it as one, because it's all tied together. Modifying the man, Town Ordinance ninety-eight dash twenty-seven A one J as follows, mixed-use development as defined in eight thirteen M of the Connecticut General Statutes with a deferred assessment limited to the non-residential aspect of the principal uses as set forth in the subject one, or used by, by, or on behalf of a health system as defined in nineteen-eight dash five oh eight C of the Connecticut General Statutes. And modify the then ninety-eight dash twenty-eight B. The EDC shall review each application submitted to it and shall forward each such application to the Selectmen within sixty days of receipt, comma, together with the EDC's report and recommendations concerning whether or not the application meets the eligibility criteria contained in the ordinance. the application meets the eligibility criteria contained in the ordinance. The EDC, in its report, they limit its recommendation to the, for the selectmen as to what principal use or uses the applicant should be granted as a deferral, as well as the amount of the assessment deferral, and the number of years the deferral will remain in effect pursuant to the provisions of ninety-eight dash twenty-nine B. One, and two, and three, as herein after set forth. Such reports shall include the specific reasons in support of its findings and recommendations set forth therein. So I'll put a motion on the floor that those two phrases be modified. Of course, uh, they would have to go to a public hearing and then another vote to enact them. So that's, that's part of the down the road, but that's my motion to, uh, at, at the, uh, request of the EDC and the Town Attorney that we take steps to, to clarify that language. So is there a second? Okay, second by Paul. Any questions?
Yeah, do you want to set the date after this?
That's, uh, that's item number, um, eighteen.
Okay.
All right, so yeah, we'll do that later.
So, in a, in a nutshell, can you summarize this?
Here's what it is. The EDC always thought that what they were gonna be doing with the deferral was just dealing with commercial. And what happened was, they had me take the definitions out of the state statutes. One of the definitions is mixed-use development. It says needs a development containing one or more multi-family or single-family dwelling and one or more commercial public institutional retail office or industrial uses. So what's happened is you've got somebody that came in with an application, and about half of it is all residential, the other half is commercial. They don't want to give half of, uh, half of what they have to the, uh, to the residential, because they believe that we have plenty of residential. The idea was, was to spur commercial and industrial. So that's all we're doing is we're limiting this, and then what we're doing in B is we're giving the EDC the authority to say, they came in and they asked for X, Y, and Z. We're giving them, we're gonna recommend only X of Y, because it was no discretion the first time around.
So it's safe to say that that was the intent in the first place?
Yeah, I believe it was.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, so, uh, I, we'll try your minds and, uh, to vote on this, to move it to a public hearing. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Now, the, uh, the companion part of this is a recommendation from the Economic Development Commission to, um, grant a deferral of assessment increase for one fifty-five Greenwood Avenue. Um, to summarize, I'm gonna put, make a motion that we approve. The recommendation from the Economic Development Commission to, um, defer one hundred percent of the property's commercial assessment increase for a total of two years, estimated at six hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred forty dollars a year and one thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars and eighty-eight, thirty-nine and eight, eight hundred eighty dollars over two years. And this is an assessment increase, it's not a tax, that is, the taxes would not be calculated. So that's my motion, is to grant the, uh, EDC's recommendation that we defer one hundred percent of the commercial assessment increase only, not the residential, for a total of two years. Okay, so the motion on the floor, seconded. Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
I understand what EDC wants. Are we setting precedent here for any development? People are asking for deferrals. That's my concern.
Well, that we, when we. Yeah, we, uh, we passed that.
I know.
Yeah, just to, just to back up, I'm gonna, I'm gonna test my memory here, but we, we put the commercial deferral in place. It's actually quite modest. Uh, we excluded residential, but we put that in place to really to build, build the, the tax base without, you know, increasing the other costs. Uh, now, this particular piece of property is located right down here, you know, it's a carl tree property. But we were aiming at things like the Berkshire Park and Clark Park.
Right.
To, to bring, and then by, by having that on the books, that also put us on the radar of the, uh, Seds, the, uh, the economic development, the regional thing, so we, we appear on searches as a viable location. Uh, Janice, are you still on with us?
I am.
So you want, if you want to talk a little bit about, you know, the benefits of, uh, of having the, uh, the assessment deferral program and the, uh, and being as part of the Seds, the regional Seds?
Yeah, well, what we've seen is that, um, there's been a lot of projects that developers have been interested in um, doing in the town. What we don't see is, um, a lot of interest in building commercial. So what this has provided us is an opportunity for developers um, to look at adding commercial to the projects that may have been, um, mostly residential or all residential. So in my opinion, it's been very effective in, um, promoting the commercial, um, building within our town. Um, and then also, uh, reducing the residential, um, that may have gone into a project without this, without this ordinance. So I do think it has benefited us. Um, usually when a developer comes in, we have the conversation about this. Um, and it is a part of their decision-making, um, the amount of deferral that they may be getting and how that would, um, help them um, provide the commercial property, um, in the town. So, um, so I think it has, I, it has benefited, um, and it has not, you know, like we had discussed before, it is not, um, it's helping us, I believe, in terms of reducing residential and not providing an incentive, um, for residential.
Thank you. Do you remember the, the property on Route Six, you know, the same thing, they had condos and they had, we just yeah, granted the, they, they went up, they wound up selling the property though, so they're back to square one.
Yes, that's true.
Um, any other questions?
No.
Uh, Rich?
Yeah, it's, it's just, they're, they're getting around it by doing the commercial on the bottom and then doing the residential above it. So, you know, we're giving them a break on the, on the, uh, commercial end. But we're allowing them to, I want to say, overbuild. Gives them an opportunity to save some of that money for their residential building. Part of it, you know, I, I know we agreed to that, but, uh, it, you know, when we were thinking about it, it was more commercial, straight commercial, not, not the mixed use.
Yeah. Well, they, Marty, correct me if I'm wrong, their, their recommendation is only for the commercial portion.
Yeah, yeah, I understand it, yeah, but above the commercial, they got two stories of residential.
But Rich, what, they could have not done any commercial on the fir-, on the first floor. This incentive, this provides them the incentive to include commercial in their project, which could have been improved, approved without any commercial whatsoever.
Or could have.
Or reduce, or a reduced amount of commercial.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
All right, hearing none. Those in favor of granting the deferral as recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. And now, uh, moving on to item number ten, um, I would like to welcome, um, Sanitha Malkani and her daughter, Amisha. Um, they, Sunny is with the, uh, Energy Commission. And they have been working on a program called Heat Smart. And, uh, I know, Amisha, you've been working with Commander Duane Els, um, as, as part of, uh, a capstone project for your, uh, your high school career, correct?
Yeah.
So, well, welcome. Uh, I'll turn the floor over to you to explain, uh, you, you gentlemen may remember some years ago when we did the solar, uh, program, uh, which was very successful, and many, many, uh, town residents uh, either leased or bought or purchased solar panels for their homes. So this is kind of a similar thing in a way, similar concept. So I'll turn the floor over to Amisha. Please, please proceed.
Thank you, Chris, for the opportunity to talk to you now, um, as a high school student, it's really, um, exciting to know. Um, so, this project is called Heat Smart, and, um, it's actually created by this organization called People's Action for Clean Energy. Um, but I would be carrying it out as a manager for the town.
Is that? Did you get that into present, presentation mode? Hold on just a second. Hold on, slight technical problem.
Yeah, the fillers, um, I had actually helped with the solar, uh, project in twenty seventeen. We got roughly about twenty-five to thirty new bits of residential in that year.
You're, you're a host, you should be able to.
Um, can you, can you move the, uh, the sidebar with the, uh, participants, maybe slide that up a little bit if it, if it moves? Because maybe.
It can change that to go along here. You know what we, I mean, here you have this on the bottom. I think if you click on the, on one thing, it'll start the thing, so. And if you click over on the left there to start.
But they're a host. Well, it's not letting me.
Well, the, the screen sharing is working. What we want to do.
It's like the PowerPoint work.
Yeah, go to the presentation mode. There we go. Okay.
Then you get to full screen and you'll get rid of the participant list. Is it allowing you to?
Tell you what, we should click, uh, click on participants.
You're, you're a host. You have access.
All right. Well, I think that'll work.
Go to view and click on full screen, and then the participant list will go away. Go up in the right-hand corner.
Yeah, view.
Full screen.
Full screen.
The bottom one, yeah.
Yeah. There we go.
It's on your, you pulled it up on your computer, right?
But, well, I was able to do this, but I'm not able to switch slides.
Yeah, you can in there. But you made it bigger. She can't hear because the presentation's on her computer now, this computer. You have to put the presentation on this computer. Well, if you want to go forward, I'll picture it, so it'll move the screen forward.
All way better from here.
Amisha, I don't know why it's not, I mean, you're a host. I don't know why it's not allowing you to do it, but if you'll just tell me. I can hear, I can hear everything. So just tell me to please, you know, move to the next.
Okay, go ahead.
Program, uh, supported by the Energy Committee and our, um, high school target program. Which, the main objectives of which are to educate the residents that she'll finally get an option for their home. Explain all the risks and benefits associated with it, and also get them in contract with the appropriate contractors and, um, health, uh, contractors to get it installed with their homes if they're interested. As along with this, um, we are also working to maybe get grants or something to help residents, um, with paying for the initial installation costs. Um, this is, please move to the next slide, please. Thank you. So, um, geothermal energy itself, um, works due to the earth, um, having a constant temperature of fifty degrees at the depth of that whole, hey, hey, in the earth. And by installing, uh, housing with antifreeze, it allows the system to exchange the temperature of the air inside the building with the temperature, the constant temperature of the earth. Um, so in summer, the hotter air in the house is exchanged for the cooler fifty, fifty degrees. And, um, in winter, the cooler air is exchanged for the warmer fifty degrees. The reasons we're not, like, using it is because it is simply just hard to, um, replace an existing technology that's achieved economies of scale, um, with a newer technology that hasn't been around or wasn't as popular. So, simply just replacing fossil fuel and heating oil without being able to educate residents is hard to do.
Looks like.
Yeah, makes sense. Thank you. So benefits of switching to geothermal is that, first of all, and most importantly, is that it is environmentally friendly significantly more than any other heating systems. Um, it's more energy efficient with twenty to sixty percent less electricity than other heating systems. And it's more cost efficient, our annual operating cost after installation of it is, um, lower than any other heating system. I'll be going more. So for the environmental benefits, um, the source of what keeps the, um, temperature of the sublayers constant is the sun, so it's a sustainable source, whereas fossil fuels and other industrial isn't. Um, it requires less labor and produces seventy-five to eighty-five percent less carbon dioxide. In the chart, you can see the annual carbon dioxide emissions by technology, um, per year. The top is geothermal, and it's clear and visibly much smaller than the rest of it. As for the costs, um, the costs of different, um, heating systems are listed here with, uh, geothermal being bottom two. And they are just, this is the annual operating cost for a two thousand two hundred size, two thousand two hundred square foot house, which is around the average house size in Deathville. So the annual operating cost after the installation would only be one thousand, um, two hundred eighty-four dollars at most for each brick there. Um, there are definitely a few potential pitfalls to installing these systems. First of all, there's the environmental risk. Um, the system does use antifreeze within the pipes which go into the ground. So if this could, this is obviously affordable with, um, proper installation and if everyone was getting in contact with, um, qualified contractors, which as part of our program we are doing, um, talking to contractors and H F contractors. Um, but residents should know about, um, residents as well, business owners who are thinking about it, should know that there is a risk of contaminating groundwater off of first, sure, pipe.
If there's a leak, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the cost, the initial installation cost, and this is without counting labor, is about twenty thousand dollars for a two thousand two hundred square foot house, which is around the average and is quite expensive, but we are looking to take plans to help residents with this. Um, it visits the older homes or, um, and the land save requirements of resur, which is why we need an H F contractor to, to praise the house first to see other fit. Um, and during winter, especially in England, where we're used to a very changing, by very variable weather, um, the coldest, on the coldest day, a supplement heat source might need to be used to, um, heat up the house. the coldest, on the coldest days, a supplement heat source might need to be used to heat up the house. The next slide, please. So our ask is for project approval through signing the MOUs to, once again, educate our residents on the risks and benefits, get them in contact with the correct contractors, the qualified contractors, as well as continue working to obtain grants. We have listed our specs here. We would create a website for people to find information in so hold seminars and webinars to educate interested residents as well as work with our R and P C to show kids' interest in it as kids caring about their future and environment. Thank you once again for this opportunity and I think you're a inspiration.
May I ask you that the Board of Selectmen has to approve the project? And was the sign and memorizer of understanding which we were forwarded to. You have to give them down so for your review. And so the request needs that they will count, approve this project and then sign the MOU with the page. So that we can move forward with the project.
Okay. So, so basically the, the, the ask here is for the town to endorse the project, correct? And how, how would this be communicated to homeowners and to developers?
One of our plans is through our school, we could be sending home flyers for parents, to our students to learn about this as an option as well as setting up a website and using maybe a social media campaign to educate people.
We also request email commission to the town, like we did for the solar campaign. We are getting some funding from CPAC, a small amount, but the town can also support with any additional funding towards the program.
Now, is there a cost to the town to do this?
We don't have a price for it and.
But, but the, the cost would be just for the homeowners who install it, correct? Okay, so, so the Board of Selectmen doesn't have to appropriate any funding for it, correct? Okay, okay. So, and I see that you have identified three installers. Well, you have an energy auditor. And Danieline Energy is, is, that's an installer, correct?
So CPAC is a non-profit that is going through the process of actually identifying vendors and vetting them for the project. That's not something we, Ameesha or the LSC committee is qualified to do. So we are relying on the non-profit to get the, through the vetting of the vendor.
All right. Okay, so I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we endorse this program subject to review of the MOU by the town attorney. Is there a second?
I have a second and I have a question.
Sure, great. So we have a motion on the floor, so by all means.
Does this, and maybe it's Marty when we review it. Going through the Board of Education, is that considered soliciting? True. Are you going to send out flyers to parents of the schools?
Is, is, is that the plan?
That was just one option. It's not necessary. Our main track is a social media campaign.
Yeah, so I think you have to be careful. There's a fine line of, you know, what you can do that you're not soliciting from, from the parents, so.
Yeah. Yeah, disseminating information about the benefits of geothermal is a worthy thing, but yeah, you have to be careful about. But we can, we can help you with guidance on that when, when we review the MOU too. Yeah, that's a good point, Rich. Thanks.
And, and we had done something through the, for the solar campaign, so we kind of have it come to place for the communications aspect and we share that.
Okay. So, so like the solar program, this disseminates information to homeowners about the benefits, the benefits to the earth and to their bottom line. And we are endorsing this as a, as a proposal. Okay. But Paul, do you have any questions?
It's just a general one. Is there anything in grants built from the state or from the feds?
I believe there is a grant available from Eversource. As well as we are.
From Eversource, did you say?
From Eversource, yeah.
Okay.
And then also the CPAC organization is trying to also get funding for their efforts. Like right now, I just received a phone call just to divide a dollar. Quite sure who the source is, but there's about four thousand dollars that they're willing to put in towards the mountain. Far as the residential, the residential function, there are some grants available for residents to take advantage of any green energy. And all of the, these programs for the education campaigns will educate them. And the vendors will be drawn in are also those who can help the residents get those grants. They have, so our role is really to educate and play matchmaker between residents and vetted vendors. And after that, we really got involved. There is a transaction between the resident and the vendor. Neither the committee nor the school nor the town will have any for.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, it's morning confusion.
Okay. I, I know that when we did the solar program, there was a little sensitivity about picking the installers, but homeowners are free to pick any installer. But this was the one that you vetted through the process, correct? Yeah, might be four. Okay. Okay, any other questions? All right, so I'll try your minds. Those in favor of endorsing this, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Sorry for the long wait.
No problem. Thank you.
Have a good night. Thanks for coming. Moving on to item number eleven, consideration of self-contained breathing apparatus bottles and air packs. This was approved by the Fire Commission. In fact, it was their first hope they could do. Approve, and this is the request from Chief McCollum from Bethel Fire to purchase from, from current CNR, which is included in this year's budget, twelve self-contained breathing apparatus bottles at one thousand seventy-nine dollars each for a total of twelve thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars and twelve SCBA air packs at eight thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars apiece for a total of ninety-eight thousand seven hundred. So I move that we appropriate and send to the Board of Finance for their consideration a sum not to exceed one hundred eleven thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars for the purchase of these materials as requested by Chief McCollum from Bethel volunteer fire company. Second, okay. Any discussion?
Well, I just, being on the committee here, there was a question that we asked the fire chiefs. And this twelve, to replace these twelve air packs, they practically have forty, so they're rotating thing all the time. So, you know, we're not buying forty at that rate.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
The bottles for Stony Hill that were discussed at the Fire Commission meeting.
Did, did the Fire Commission deal with those the other night?
Yes.
Given together, we approved the bottles for both departments, the bottles and later pack for both departments.
At, at the same prices?
Yeah.
It was. I, you know what, I, we didn't, we didn't get a memo on that. Chief Baker, do you, do you have, do you know the quantities of each of them?
Yeah, I had, I had requested fifteen thousand dollars for just bottles only. I did not need air packs and, and knew that. The commission asked if it was the same pricing and I said, yes, that's correct.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add that as a second motion after we do this then. Cause I really, that is, but I didn't think they voted on that too. Okay, so any other questions on this? Yes, Marty?
That's not in minutes. The only thing in minutes for August eleventh was the IT report. Everything else is not reported yet. There's nothing in there about Stoney Hill. In the minutes of the Fire Commission. There's SCBA bottles, just says, request the bottles forward, forward to for the selectmen and then the air packs, the same thing. There's no mention at all. But yeah.
Did it, does it, does that, do those minutes specify?
They, they don't even, those two don't even specify who gets the bottles originally or the air packs.
Okay, I, I, I think what they do is they combine them into one motion.
Yeah, we, we did.
Yeah, cause does it have quantities?
No.
Okay, that's, I, I think that's, yeah.
It was all combined into one. I didn't have paperwork on Stony Hill, but there was discussion.
Yeah.
And it was just, it, it wasn't separated out. It was just, yeah. And there wasn't a number given to it. I guess they didn't have a motion on certain numbers.
Okay.
That's why the minutes are, you know.
All right, I got it.
What are we doing here? I'm seeing twelve SCBA bottles and twelve SBC air packs. Now what else are we doing?
Well, let's vote on this first and then we're going to handle Chief Baker's request.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve the purchase of these from Bethel Fire Department. Any other questions, Rich? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. So Chief Baker, how many, how many did you ask the commission for the other night at that, at that meeting?
It would be fourteen bottles for the cost of fifteen thousand dollars, because they're just a thousand dollars apiece.
Okay, so just the SCBA bottles?
Correct, no airbags.
Is that approved in the budget?
I'm sorry?
Were these fourteen approved in the budget?
Yeah, that's, that's also part of, that was in the.
Here it is here. John, I got your question. This is what the commission looked at the other day.
Okay, great.
So was it fifteen thousand for the bottles?
How many bottles has it done?
John, we're fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen at what, fifteen thousand?
No, fourteen.
For a total of fifteen thousand dollars for the fourteen bottles.
Okay. I think he needs to send us a word to that effect too, so we can.
It's actually fourteen bottles from the same supplier would be fifteen thousand one hundred and six. All right. Okay, then I'm, I'm, so that was, all right, I, I see what happened here. The commission was not very specific. They should have voted on those things separately, but they lumped them together and just approved one purchase. So I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we approve the purchase of fourteen SCBA bottles for Stony Hill Fire Company at a cost of one hundred, or one thousand seventy dollar, one hundred, excuse me, one thousand seventy-nine dollars each for a total of fifteen thousand one hundred and six dollars. Is there a second?
Thanks.
Okay.
But I think you, you need a word or confirming that also.
Yeah. You can do that for us, can't you, Chief?
Yes, sir. I will get you an invoice.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, you're going to go to those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Okay, hey Chief, because we, it wasn't really handled that well with the minutes, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna put off the extraction tools for the next meeting.
Well, that, that wasn't added, that wasn't discussed.
That was, okay, that wasn't discussed. All right, well, that'll be on the next agenda for the commission. Okay?
Okay.
All right, so go ahead with the bottles. Item number twelve, I'm not even sure we need to vote on this. I think this might just be a reporting thing. Both fire departments are in need of, as we, as we increase the demands on the departments, we have a plan internally as part of our IT structure to fold them into our network administration. And what this would mean would be that our IT staff would be responsible for their internet connections and their, their major equipment. That would put them on the CEN network along with us in the library and schools for high-speed internet. So for reporting, for emergency use and so on, I think it's in the best interest that we begin to face them and obviously there's going to be a budget impact that's very minor to do so, but I, just to make it formal, I'll put a motion on the floor that, to make it formal that we will begin the process of taking over administration of the Stony Hill Fire and Bethel Fire Department Technology.
Matt, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
It was my understanding that the firehouses, they're still going to budget for their IT needs when they need new computers and stuff like that, just to be transparent with the cost of the firehouse running. Is that what you're proposing?
Yes, correct. Yep. So that's, that's going to be kind of an ongoing thing because we have to fold it into the budget, but it's, it's mostly the, the internet.
I think Brad, you're going to have to have a special line item for this next year and next year's budget for both houses then.
They've been paying for their computers and stuff, I believe, in their budget anyway. Is that correct, John?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so they, it's in their budget already, Paul. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't shifting from their budget to the town budget.
No.
Just the overseeing of it.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we're just going to have them over, put, put it under the management so that we've got consistency. Okay, any other questions on that?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item thirteen, the, the one you've all been waiting for. Consideration of a Pierce enforcer, PUC one hundred seventh foot, seven quint fire truck, stock unit number three four zero nine three. And I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we approve and send to the Board of Finance for their consideration, purchase of this fire truck. This is a one-year-old demonstrator truck with thirteen thousand miles on it. It is a quint that then anticipated in long-term capital plans for almost a decade. And would take pressure off of our current tower. It would, it would spread the load and actually get more years of use out of the tower than we have. And also at some point be the primary unit that would be the primary stick, as they call it. So this is an opportunity to save probably at this point several hundred thousand dollars and a year's worth, a year and a half's worth of build time on finding, buying a new truck. It does have the items on it that, I mean, the, the basic feature doesn't have all the equipment. It's not outfitted with everything. We would still have to do that. That is probably another time, help me out, I think it's another forty-one thousand, I think. Give or take, but it, it's, it's a rare opportunity to obtain a truck without, at, at a, at a very substantially reduced cost and save taxpayers money. So I put a motion on the floor that we approve and forward to the Board of Finance.
Okay.
Okay.
And they're also, it puts down on build time. It would take a, a year and a half to build it.
What's the original cost for this, if you'd buy a new one, completely new, today's market?
One point two million.
One point two million, so we're saving two hundred something thousand.
Yep. Yeah, this is, oh, I didn't, hey Dan, I forgot to put the cost in there. The cost of the truck is nine hundred fifty thousand is the offer.
Chief Baker, have you, has anything from your house gone over the, the truck and looked at it and examined it?
That's correct. It, it was brought to Stony Hill Firehouse for us to demo. We did go through the truck all, all sides. We raised the ladder. We took it for a drive. So yes, we have gone through the truck.
And you're getting a new year, a, a, a new warranty on that?
Correct. The warranty would be the exact same warranty if it was a brand-new truck off the line and it will start the date of delivery. Correct, the uh, warranty would be the exact same warranty if it was a brand-new truck off the uh, line, and it will start the date of delivery. And they are going through the, the uh, truck specifically to make sure that it is. As good as new because it was a, a demo, but they are, one of the things that they're gonna be doing is, is replacing the windshield because I know it's been uh. Uh, nicked, chipped from the uh. Eleven uh, thousand miles that put on during the uh, demo process. So it will be a new one, we uh, we take delivery. With the added bonus of the uh. Uh, break-in period of driving it, so we know it's not gonna have any engine issues.
Oh, they they brought it up to the firehouse and I happened to be there when it came. You know, they set up the ladder, they put the ladder up on the roof, uh, basically, it's almost a one-man operation. The, the driver got to the fire, there was no one else there, he can um, set up the ladder, they can start squirting water out of it. Uh, almost by itself.
It has a remote cannon.
Well, left it under the bridge on fifty-three?
No, no. But it, it's a single axle, um. It's a short body truck, so it, they, you know, they would have to go down to one of the developments, turn around and go back down to the uh, the town garage. But that's really the only thing over there, the town garage, it has been a big building, you got the, the car. You have the car place, the car place over there. But it is mainly for the residential too, it, you know, they can go up these uh, steep driveways and. Narrow driveways that where the big truck is, is hard type of newer.
Are you extending to a hundred and seventeen feet too?
Yeah. And and it's fast, it's unbelievable how fast. It it moves.
It's not out of the question, it's worth looking at. I mean, you know, we, we have uh, fund balance surplus, we have to talk to the Board of Finance about that, but that is, that is. Uh, it's not out of the question, I can't say it's, it's a no, so it's possible.
So, Paul, the fire commission met on this also, we had a special meeting the other night, um, and then the discussion. Between everybody, Tom participated, uh, Chief Baker. Um, and uh, the final vote was uh, four to one on it.
Well, I I I think, you know, Stony Hill has been, uh, has been a void for them for a long time, I have a concern especially with six there. And as they've said in all budget, previous budget meetings, it's not the height, it's the distance from the road. And I, I think this puts uh, Stony Hill in a good position, you guys that I know have got the room in the, in the firehouse for that.
That was my first question.
They got the room, so re- really, your, your, your fleet is pretty much up to date up there, right, Chief? Don't go, I don't want to know more surprises, that's all.
Okay. Alright, any other, any other questions? You want to call a picture?
No, I'm feeling nice, no, thank you.
Alright, if there are no other questions, I'll try your minds, those in favor uh, forwarding this to the Board of Finance for their consideration. Obviously, we'd have to go to a town meeting as well, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, if motion carries. Thank you, Chief, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Um, going on to item number fourteen, uh, Nancy is here, Chair of the Public Site Building. Commission, and thank you so much for your patience, I'm glad you stuck with us tonight.
Might be better to be here in person and answer questions, et cetera.
Yeah.
So I gave you a brief um, update, and I actually added a little bit to the uh, the one that I had originally sent. It was just an item I had gotten out in July. Town received on a school project. Uh, in July, the town received checks from EverSource on the energy incentive, um, payback. For building design in an energy efficient way, so we got um. Hundred and fifty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars for Rockwell and two hundred and thirty, two thousand one hundred and forty dollars for Johnson. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I just actually, what I did, I sent out the um, report, but then I figured. From the last meeting that we had, I had the budget summary and um. The cost analysis that Geraldine always does, comparing the new projects and where we are specifically. So, that, the EverSource, um. That can do pretty quickly, usually it takes a little longer when you start doing paperwork with them and take some files to do. All the paperwork, then they come over and do some checking, et cetera, but we got it pretty quickly, so that's a good thing. So, uh, with school projects, we are about ninety percent complete with both schools. And we have small list of punch list items and um. A few things on the exterior that we're still working on, getting not just completed, but making sure that we get what we want. And Rizzo's really being great at taking care of, um, making sure all the different subcontractors who are involved are. Doing what they're, were, but what's specific in their bid packages and getting everything completed to our satisfaction. We're still working towards permanent CO, we hope to have that for school open on August thirtieth. And. As in previous. Reports, we're still, as far as the budget, um, under budget, complete, as a complete total amount, approved your referendum. Under budget by about eight, eight hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred and thirty.
That's on both projects combined, right?
Both combined, Rockwell is still over budget by about five hundred thousand. And Johnson is under about one point three million. And that, the actual cost analysis that um, Geraldine puts together and usually includes any sort of pending items. So we're still carrying a few things, possible change orders, um, and other. Outstanding things that are still being worked out on the financial part, so, um, but as I said, total. Under budget, which means it's in our contingency. About eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. Um, but how, just roughly, how much, how many more items are left on the various punch lists? You sent me some, and there, there are hundreds of items, but they're mostly closed.
So, right, and and so with, with any punch list in any project, you're gonna have an ongoing list. And with this one specifically, because it's, was done in phases, each phase had a punch list, and then you kept adding. They don't ever, like, take the punch list and cross things off that say closed. We do have, I did bring one of the um, open items.
Yeah.
There were, I remember looking at it, maybe about ten items that. Rockwell and Dewar at Johnson, maybe five at Johnson, that were still open, being worked on. Um, so, but that doesn't mean that, that longer punch list, which again is all the different phases, you know, we had phase one. And then sometimes we had A, B to the phases, so each phase has got to be. Like, close to completion, a punch list will stick together, and the punch list is done by the architects. Um, and the construction manager, and then. Any of the staff members in the building, they're working in the buildings, principal, et cetera, they would get all this together, you have to cover it, send it to the wall. The architect and the construction manager, so. I know that there's that, I don't know, hundred and thirty something page punch list. That is all the different phases listed together, that's the way it works. And and we don't, in our meetings, don't go over the punch lists because it would take way too long. Those are done in uh.
Well, they're, they're done in the trailer.
So it's a working document that works, that goes between. Instruction manager, the architect, and and Geraldine too, we own a script, and then, and obviously then the um. Any un, anything that's unfinished that needs input from the architect, get the input from the architect. Anything that needs to be done by a contractor, Rizzo goes, deals with the contractors.
Nancy, I got that July first here, when it, it was just a tone that we got from you, okay?
Right.
You know, I, like you say, there's a lot of things right here, and and to your best knowledge. How much of this has been completed roughly? Because I look at the pictures, there's some things that are, you know, most of it's like landscaping or. Or or the topography.
Yeah, landscaping, um, it needs to be something that we're, we're working on, and Rizzo's actually working on with the landscaper. Um, because it's not, we don't, we've seen it, we've driven through that, we are not pleased with it at all, and see all the other areas of the school. That, um, the rest is nice and it's not, so.
You know, I, I know we had people that go, went through this, I mean, I went through the schools too, along with uh, everybody else here. And there, one, 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 one person brought something to my attention, whether it's not, you've got a tarozzo ore there someplace. And the holes were drilled, and patches, you can't put patches in tarozzo, and you know, according to this individual, he says, you know. It's gotta be replaced, I don't know if you've looked at that portion or not.
Was, was that Nick?
Yep.
I, I, I can't find it, I, he, he mentioned it to me too, and I don't know. The only thing that I could find, I walked through Johnson, are the places where there are brass utility covers. So there's like four or five of those, but I can, I don't know, I could not find any damage to the floor anywhere, do you? Do you know what, what he's talking about?
At our last meet, public site meeting, Bob Germanaro said that there were a couple of places where there were pinholes. Um, in the tarozzo that was not, it wasn't a big hole, it was a little pinhole, and it wasn't something that they. Felt needed to be um, replaced.
Yeah.
I didn't go out and look at it, so.
I couldn't find it, it must be.
It might have been in the old floor, so, because in the, the, in the vestule at Johnson, there's. Um, there's a whole section of old floor, and then there was a new section for it, and you can kind of see the difference between the two. Once they're waxed a few more times, then you're not gonna see the difference. And then, the only other thing that was done in Johnson, which also was filling in areas where doors were moved. And that had, that was done at the same time, and then the new section was for the vestule.
Just give us an updated list, a, a punch list.
It, yeah, when I get one, I'll, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you said, you can send it to Dan, she'll send it to all three of us.
Says on each one whether they're closed or not, so, um, each item, so if you're looking at the whole list. It says the status of the item, and like I said, if it's something that was from phase one back, you know, two years ago, it's still on the list. It's just been dealt with. Sometimes they'll um, separate out all the open items that are still being worked on and put them on a separate list. And again, like I said at our meetings, we don't get the list to look at them, you might have to ask for them, usually, um, by the code in the trailer meetings. And we don't do them, we don't work with them on our, at our meetings, or else we'd be out of meetings, we're already having meetings, so ten o'clock at night, so. Um, we're there till midnight, that's all we, we went through the punch list. And that kind of micro-management, I think, isn't not a good thing for our committee to do. With other stuff that, that's up to the architect, the construction manager.
Well, is our owner's rep uh, inspecting those things after they're done, to look at?
The architect does that.
Okay.
Well, she should, so, she might not herself go out and do all of that, there, there's a team from her company that's been.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, or there's an onsite person, she'll go out and look at stuff too, she'll meet with the architect out there, go through things, et cetera.
Okay.
So, um. Like I said, that usually the punch list is generated by the architect and construction manager, and then with this project. We did get lists from the staff of things that checked on, et cetera.
Okay.
And those are evidence.
Okay, so, uh, so Geraldine from STV.
Yes.
Has, her staff goes out and works with the architect and examines those things when they're done.
The architect's gonna be there, usually Geraldine herself goes.
Okay, so she does.
There was an onsite person during the major part of the construction from STV that was on those.
Okay.
That important between both projects.
Um, do you have any further information on these holes that Bob Germanaro mentioned that he saw, that, that Nikolas saw?
He said there were a couple of pinholes that he found, and they weren't big enough to do anything about.
Do you know, have any idea what caused them, or is it just manufacturing flaw in the?
Or unless it was something that was in the old part of the floor that was drilled.
Could be in the old floor.
Are those, would those be uh, just filled in or repaired anyway?
I don't, those would be a good idea to fill those in, because if they're so tiny, you're not throwing them in, you don't see.
Is that what you're talking about? Okay, no, alright. Well, you know what, I'll, I'll call Bob, because I, I actually went looking for those, I, I could not find it. I, you know, I went through with Mrs. Salerno, uh, through the old lobby and the new lobby. And down the one hallway that leads to the gym, and I, I couldn't find any evidence of any holes, so. Alright, I, I bet if Bob Germanaro knows where they are, then I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Any other questions on schools?
No.
Uh, so I, you, you've given us the update on the police station.
Yep.
Just as a reminder, uh, I know that Rich and Paul, uh, probably, probably all three of us. Would like to be present for the next water test now that the, now that the uh. Uh, the wall has been treated, so that's coming up a week after next, I believe, right?
Right, they said initially, um, that, so the twenty-one days plus a little bit, the week of um, August thirtieth. But they haven't set up a date or plan yet.
Okay.
And I would hope, and I can email um, down to let them know that if they're gonna do this. And we test multiple locations, and we try to do more than one in a pile, so we get a bunch of hoses out there and. So we don't have to stand around and wait too long.
Yeah. Okay.
Because the, um, fielder, second field report that came from Parkman Architects. And said, good, we're good to go.
Is everything else been, they talked about some flashing details that they were gonna do, is, it's all that other stuff?
The flashing was also completed.
So everything is really done?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, the caulking, the, the joints and.
Right, and I, and the, the first thing at the time was the masons doing that, control joint, and doing other, dealing with the crack and all that. And then coating and then caulking. And they made sure they covered the weak holes so that they didn't get, um, covered again, so those are still out there and working.
Did anybody uncover the weak holes?
Last time I was out there, they were uncovered, but they did something to make sure they didn't get painted, and they, they weren't spraying that stuff, they were rolling it, I think, or brushing it. So I think it was easy to go around the leaks and make sure that they weren't, um. But the last time I was out there, one of the guys was scraping, pulling, um, masking off of, I think it's other. So they must have masked some of the stuff.
Yeah.
And we haven't, I don't think we've had any driving rain since they moved it in. Yeah, we do, before then, we make sure we want to see if somebody can check it, make sure.
Mm-hmm, you want to remind them to bring the lights when they come again?
Yeah, I don't want to use the lights for the last.
And did we ever block them?
Uh, no, the last thing I have here, uh, I want, just as a reporting item for Rich and Paul. We have been working, as I, I mentioned several meetings ago, we put together kind of a task force to look at. Possible uses of the ARPA funds, uh, there are a variety of things that we're working through and putting cost estimates together. And I will have a list of those things for your review and perusal and. To begin the, the approval process at the next meeting, which will be September seventh. Uh, but one of the things that, or two of the things that's on that list that we would like to, we are going to propose. Uh, use of the ARPA funds is renovating the front of the building, over here, we're in front of the GP room, so we have a. Secure entrance in case we ever needed to do that again. Uh, upgrading the air handling systems and filtration in this building, as well as in the senior center. And renovating the locker rooms and shower, uh, all of which follow to the uses of those funds because they are. Part of our emergency management plan and system and uh, useful in terms of. Keeping people apart from one another, if there is an emergency, we have to use the shelter, so that's why that's on Nancy's report, is that. Committee has picked up that again, and we're redoing the cost estimates and taking a look at it.
Architecturally, you mean, change those windows too?
Yes.
The windows in the. That wasn't.
On the corner?
That wasn't part of the original, I don't think.
Well, with the windows, not the skylight.
No, not the skylight, but the windows.
Wall windows.
The wall of windows, in the gym hallway?
No.
The entry to the gym?
Yeah.
I don't think that was in the original plans for the locker rooms.
No, no, it wasn't. I'll look, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, cause that was, that was in the original plan, it had the skylight, you know, some more stuff, and then the whole wall might have been taken out, but just, uh, whatever window.
We have to check.
And the question is, are they generally efficient?
Oh, yeah.
Well, probably not, they're,
I couldn't.
They're, they're fifty-year-old.
Yeah.
That's a story.
Yes.
You went to school here.
And they were, they were here before I was here.
Well, so, I guess, the, um, what we've looked at is, at our meetings, since this has kind of come up again, we have kind of two separate sets of plans, one for the GP room lobby, including the doors and all, and then one for the locker rooms, and kind of putting them together and getting the plans up to speed, might take a little bit and add some funds. We're gonna include those windows, we gotta make sure that's in there, you have a lot, skylights were gone a long time ago.
Yeah.
Um, but if, if those windows and, and that entry door, which I assume with that whole wall of windows, with the entry door in it, gets redone, that's redoing the entry door. Um, if that's gonna be included, I think what we need to do is look at, there are two things, one, getting, do we need to have quote shovel-ready plans in order to get the grant, or is the grant just kind of like, here's some money, spend it appropriately? Then, that's something that we've talked about in our meetings, and also with you and Eileen Earl. Um, what's the delivery process gonna be? Are we gonna do a construction manager and an architect? Are we gonna do design bill? Or are we, so we have to come up with, how's the project gonna be?
Managed, yeah.
Managed, yeah. Overseen and managed, so we've gotta come up with a, a way that, that figure that out.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's to be determined, right?
Right. But I'll say that having an owner's rep.
Yeah.
Okay. So, if you have any other questions, I will answer them. Um, if there's more um, about, specifically about, especially the school project, I might have to take it either to Rizzo, or to, um, the architect, or Geraldine, or Gilver, and I see, if it's over all kinds of stuff, and.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have.
Yeah.
For, uh, didn't John or Roy speak to, um, Architect Gil? And they had mentioned maybe ten or fifteen thousand proceed money to?
Yes, right, so, so, the, um, John and Roy from the building committee met with Peter Eckert from Architect Gil a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, actually. To just take a quick look and see, okay, we're gonna bring this all back up, cause one set of plans was completed in twenty nineteen, and the other set of plans was completed, I believe, in twenty seventeen. Those are any updates that we need to do, we need to add anything in, you know, are, are you looking at, um, doing any major changes, et cetera?
Mm-hmm.
So we looked at that, and he said, Peter said, you know, about ten thousand to having, using what we have and just sort of bringing up if there's code changes or any of that. It sounded like ten thousand was like the upper. But if we wanted to make big changes, like move walls around, or really change, and it would be more the locker room area, make big changes, it would be A, more time consuming for him to finish the plans, and cost more, so it might be more like fifty thousand.
Um, to move this along.
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we ask the board of finance for some seed money for the architect to finalize these plans, so we can get this project on the drawing board and out to bid. It's been a long time. And the money is available.
Yeah.
Um, you know, or the, the grant money is available to, to work on the project. Um, they were talking about ten thousand. I'd, I'd even asked for twenty thousand and make sure that they included that, uh, exterior glass wall in the project. Cause I don't think it was included originally.
So, would you, like, amount not exceed kind of?
Well, I would go twenty, because if it's gotta redesign that outside wall.
Okay.
That glass wall with the entrance.
Yeah, yeah. To check on whether it included or not.
Alright, is that a motion? I agree with you, Rich.
So I would make a motion.
You know.
I, I would make a motion to ask the board of finance for twenty thousand dollars for the, uh, building committee to finalize plans and drawings in the locker room and bathroom area.
GP.
GP.
Entrance ring.
Entrance.
Okay.
However you wanna call it.
Alright. I'll second that motion. Uh, and I would identify source of funds to be the, uh, American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Right.
Because that's.
It can come from to the architect, you know, money did the architect from that?
Yes, that's part of the project, yeah. So that's an amount not to exceed. Although, is he gonna bill us twenty thousand, cause we just made the motion?
No, he's putting in.
He's, he's.
Yeah.
He's been back over here so many times.
Well, probably owe him money already.
Okay, alright, so we have a motion on the floor to request seed money to, for the purpose of finalizing these plans, which we will be part of the recommendation for use of ARPA funds. Right?
Right.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Any other questions for Nancy?
No, thank you, Nancy, for coming today.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you for all your hard work and your commission.
And I know it was a lot of hours spent there.
Certainly is.
Well, I hope you got a lot of homework done while you were sitting over there waiting.
I was, yeah.
I, I gave, yes, I gave Marty my copy, cause I've got a little problem.
Well, this is, the budget, anything to, or do you want me to send it to you?
Send, you can send it to me.
Alright, cause I know I sometimes send them wrong. Geraldine's not doing full reports anymore because it'll be only a half a page, so I could send that to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right, item fifteen, consideration of appointment of a medical advisor. Uh, Laura Vassil has requested that we appoint Dr. Theodore Blum to be the town's medical advisor. Um, and you will probably remember that Dr. Thomas, uh, who was our medical advisor for many, many years, passed away a number of months ago unexpectedly. Uh, Dr. Thomas was, uh, medical advisor to a couple of towns. Um, the, the position carries an annual stipend of five thousand six hundred dollars, which probably needs to be updated, but Dr. Blum has been volunteering his time, uh, he was at most of the Saturday morning clinics uh, that were run up at the track and field center, and he is happy to take on the responsibility of being Laura's medical backup when an MD is required to sign off on orders and so on. So I'm gonna make a motion that we, at Laura's request, we, uh, grant, that request to appoint Dr. Theodore Blum of Bethel, Connecticut, to be the town's medical advisor.
Certainly.
Okay, any, any questions, comments?
No, no. Coming from right back here, too.
Yeah. Alright, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries, and I will sign the paperwork tomorrow to appoint Dr. Blum. Item sixteen, and, um, this is an update to the, uh, multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Uh, you guys will remember, you go back ten years ago, we used to do the, try to do these things on our own, and now this is a role that has been taken on by the Western Connecticut Council of Governments. Because, uh, when it rains real hard and there's floods, or there's disasters, it doesn't affect just one town, it affects the whole region, so uh, thi- this is a great thing, really, the, uh, Western Connecticut Council has taken over the planning, all the paperwork function with the, with FEMA, uh, with EPA, with DEEP, and what the, what we're doing here is endorsing the update to the hazard mitigation plan that has been, it's an ongoing document, and it's updated once every five years, I believe. So I am gonna put a motion on the floor that we approve the resolution adopting the Western Connecticut Council of Governments' multi-jurisdictional, also jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six. Okay. Okay, any questions?
Marty, you reviewed it?
I read it.
That's all I read, I assume there's more.
Oh, yeah, it's.
It's about this thing.
Yeah, it's a, well, I'm not reading that. I'll go by this.
Okay. Alright.
It was a, well, music, fall, so basically, it's the plan we did it six or seven years ago. So when there's a disaster declared, like tropical storm ECI is, I didn't say it last year, then the federal government then allows grants for this hazard mitigation, so if the town wanted to, you know, change, make some changes, do some drainage work for, to prevent flooding, raise houses, buy property that are flood-prone all the time, and are big losses over constant years of losses, um, we would allow us to apply for grants to fund those things and, and replace them, so. And we, and we have a list of things, you know, that we wanna do, or, or things that were, are concerns to us, and we actually, from the last time we did this plan, we, we crossed a lot off. Um, a new police station with, with, with their, uh, microwave link for the radio communication systems. Um, the generator from the high school, so there's a lot of things we've crossed out, changes to the zoning regulations, about building in in floodplains and things like that, so we've added a couple of things and crossed a whole bunch off too at the same time.
Good, thank you.
Great, yeah, the, one of the cool things about it is, um, if, if you, if you're a homeowner and the floodplains change, and all of a sudden your home is now in a floodplain, and it didn't used to be, FEMA has grant monies available to purchase those homes or to raise them, but only if your town has adopted a mitigation plan, has been approved by the federal government. If you don't have the plan, then they're not eligible for the grant, so this is a really good thing to have, and, uh, very grateful that West Ca- Western Connecticut Council has taken this on. So we have motion on the floor to approve, uh, any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Now I've got a fun thing, this is, uh, something we don't normally do, but this is a resolution. I wanna put on, uh, that have you guys vote on. We were contacted by, um, the folks over in Danbury, their, uh, Danbury Chamber, I think it's City Center Danbury is gonna run the Gennaro Festival, and they have invited, you guys might know Nikki Zooks. You guys know who he is?
No.
He is the eleven-year-old food critic who, at the very beginning of the pandemic, when the restaurants were shutting down, and the governor, governor's office was, uh, closing all dining establishments and going to take out only, um, little Mr. Zooks, uh, started a video campaign where he became the food guy. And although he's not a critic, he's a food fan. And he was going, started in Bethel, going from one restaurant to another, and doing a video promotion to help keep our restaurants in business. Uh, and he became, uh, regionally known, and then became nationally known. He was picked up by, it was NBC News. Did a feature story on the young restaurant promoter who has worked so hard through, for eighteen months through the pandemic to, uh, promote, uh, his town's restaurants. So he was invited to, uh, to be the, uh, special guest, uh, food, uh, food fan guest at the Danbury Gennaro Festival. So I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that the Board of Selectment officially appoint Nikki Zooks as the honorary food ambassador to the San Gennaro Festival, and will provide him with a proclamation and a certificate for his participation. So I, any questions or comments? Is, is, if you've never, if you.
I went to San Gennaro, that's an Italian festival, really.
Um, he, he's on Facebook a lot, if you, if you go on, if you just, uh, put in Nikki Zooks, you'll see all of his videos that he's done to promote Bethel restaurants. He's done a great job. So, uh, so to appoint him the honorary ambassador, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries, thank you. Um, consideration of public hearing date for our deferral of assessment language modification, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we set that for Tuesday, September seventh. At six thirty in the GP room. You know what, this is something we could do.
I don't think you're gonna get a lot of people coming back.
What's that?
I don't think you're gonna get a lot of people coming. They're doing right here.
You know what, I'm gonna put six thirty in meeting room A, and we'll do it via hybrid, too. As a, as a, because there, there's no vote to be taken, it's a listening session.
Right.
Okay, so, uh, six thirty, meeting room A, plus hybrid, uh, video conference. Is there a second?
Clear.
Second by Rich, any, any questions?
No.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries, okay, item nineteen, charter revision. Um, Marty, what, what's the date that the ballot has to be, uh, done? Isn't it like the first week of September to go?
I checked, and I, I have to tell you off the top of my head, I don't remember the date, but it's the beginning. It's the beginning of September.
I, it's, I, I'm pretty sure it's seven, it's the.
Like the, it's like the beginning of the second week of, of September.
It's September tenth.
Yeah.
So, it's something we would have to do after the election.
There's no way.
And try to, try, try to time it for.
Yeah, okay.
For the, uh, for the, for the, for the budget vote season. I think that's, I think the last time we had a vote on the charter was during the budget time, wasn't it?
Yeah. Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, yeah, fine. You know, what I just don't want to see happen is that just, oh, we'll forget about it. I think that the question comes down to, should we resurrect the Charter Revision Commission, at least for them to have uh, one meeting and then present it again to the Board of Selectment, and then we can set a date. You know, you have, you have your hearing, and then set a date for, uh, a, uh, a referendum. I, I think they, if you're gonna, you've gotta treat this, I know it's kind of funny, but I think you gotta treat it being brand new. Otherwise, you're gonna run a problem, cause you can only set up a charter pursuant to statute. And, and under the statute, there's requirements that they, they have to have, public hearings. So, you know, what you can do is, what I would do, I would try to appoint the same people, a lot of letters, to, and tell them, but tell them that we'd like to, you know, run through the whole thing again, and we're looking for a date for the budget. And the budget vote is taking, to put the charter on. Is that what you're talking about? Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, too, you know, same thing, because.
That'll give them enough time.
Oh, I, I, I understand where you're coming from, Marty, but we have to treat it as new, but knowing the individuals who sat on this commission,
Yeah.
they're, they're not gonna take eighteen months, they'll probably take three.
No.
And they'll probably come back to us.
Yeah.
And say, okay, this is it, make your presentation, then we go to a public hearing, and put it out through a referendum.
Uh-huh.
This.
Okay.
Well, yeah. So the question comes down to, when do we wanna resurrect the commission?
Tell you what. Is it? Uh, how about if, uh, we, I do a poll, if I know if they're all willing to do that? I know a couple of them were, I asked them for, but I didn't talk to everybody.
You may have one or two that I'm seeing, I don't know.
Alright. Then how about, I'll, I'll.
When I send a letter, I'll see if they're willing to.
Yeah. I'll do that.
Okay, good.
Okay, item twenty, old PD.
Old police station.
PD.
Old police station.
I thought you said old T.
Old police station.
Janice, uh, Janice, are you still on with us? I see your name's up there, but are you?
I am, I am.
Janice and I have noodled about the old police station building for a long time. Uh, she put out sealers, uh, to the, uh, commercial real estate community. The only bite, you know, the only, the only modicum of interest that we found was from, um, a company that, uh, rebuilds firearms. And when they, when they looked at how much work needs to be done in the building, first of all, uh, planning and zoning wasn't sure that it would, in fact, they were pretty sure that, that, that would not conform with the zoning in that area. But when they looked at the building, they just said, we're gonna build new, cause we don't wanna have anything to do with the with all the lead, the asbestos, the, whatever else is in there, so um, thi- this is something that, uh, we've been looking at for months. Uh, I don't really see any purpose for the building, and I think that we should propose tearing it down and, uh, repurposing the land.
I agree with you on that. I, I've, I've been pushing for that for a long time, because first of all, and we both sit on, all of us sit on PUC.
Yeah.
And, 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 you know, we know that's an aquifer right there.
Yeah.
And you don't wanna spoil anything on the aquifer, okay, it's adjacent to it. And it's a perfect place for soccer, whatever type of sports field that you want. It's, you know, it's, it's in that vicinity, uh, you know, uh, that whole area is built up with a lot of new homes, okay? And we never have enough, uh, so-called sport fields, so th- th- this is a perfect situation, and I, I think, you know, with the funds that we got, perhaps, again, I'm leaning on these federal funds to tear that thing down, you know, and, and I, I, I realize that there are some materials in there that might have to be encapsulated, okay, and, and just like we did with the Old Town Hall. It got, got done, and you know, uh, I, I think it'll be an asset to the community to have another sports field. It's in a perfect area.
Is that something Public Works can take on? Hire, uh, a consultant?
Yes.
Uh, the demolition of the.
Yes, that, that is correct, and by coincidence, last week I asked Eric to get a quote, get a price, and they get a couple of prices from, uh, because according, according to Chris Baldwin, we have to have the building evaluated so we know what's in there, and so that's step one. So I've already asked for that process, so hopefully by the meeting on the seventh, I can, I can have a.
Great.
A, a number for you guys and we can start moving forward from there.
Okay.
Alright, very good.
Can, can I just mention one thing?
Sure.
I should have brought it up on your public comments. We're gonna have a problem on Shelby Road because of all the open space now.
Yeah.
What's happening is people, even before this thing with Draper, had been coming down, they're parking at the end of the road, there's no place to turn around. Uh-huh. You can't, cars going down there, they have to start turning back up, go back and forth. No bus can get by there, there is not a bus with nothing there can get by. And I don't know what we're gonna do, because we're gonna have to find someplace where these cars can park. I don't know whether we can do a gravel lot someplace down there, or, I don't know, but something you might want to mention to Dibble.
Okay.
And get him thinking about it.
Well, actually, that is, that's gonna, that's park and rec territory, you know, with, with the front reserve, so I'll, I'll mention it to Bob Dibble and Eileen Earl, that they have to look at the footprint of that and see if there's a place where we could put a lot.
Yeah.
Like at the other end.
And just so you know, I got the deed for the property, I'm gonna record it tomorrow.
Ah, okay, great. Okay, great. Alright, so, um, that concludes our agenda, this wasn't as late as I thought. I'm sorry, I know. Second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Dion, thanks, Janice.
Have a good night.
Good.
Good night.
Night. Yeah.
Still recording.